It is 3:34, we will go ahead and get started. Mark, do you mind leaving us an indication?
I don't mind. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we just come thanking you for this day, oh Jesus. We come thanking you, oh God, for all of your blessings. We come thanking you, God, for everyone in this room. And we pray, oh God, that you guard our minds, guard our decisions. We pray, Heavenly Father, that all that we do, all that we decide, could be for the betterment of our city, Lord. But we just thank you, we praise you, and give you glory, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. All right, we're going to talk about the ethics ordinance. I had them pull up what currently we have considered as an ethics ordinance, which is a single page. And it really starts at the decorum, which is section 1-4-44, and ends basically on 1-4-46. So that's really, as of right now, that's all we have. I know there have been some, you know, saying, hey, we've got an ethics ordinance in place. Well, yes, we do, but it's not much. So that's why we've been, when we did the council retreat, we talked about the ethics ordinance. And I told everyone that I would go out and look. I've looked at about eight of them. Some of them are fairly vague, and some of them are really put together poorly. But the City of Belmont, which you have a copy, is hands down the most user-friendly, but yet covers a lot of stuff. And what I was really wanting to do is just go through this today and kind of look at the topics. If you like the way it's written, say, you know, that looks pretty good. If we say, well, what if, what if we can have Gary address it before we have them put it into a graph form?
He said we already had one. He said.
That's...
Is that all he has?
That works out to the quorum.
That's it.
And goes to our... So...
It's really not...
So, and that's about all we have now. So, you know, that's one of the reasons we've talked about this. And, because I think, you know, especially moving forward, we need to have conflict of interest in place, say, you know, I'm in banking, we're talking about banking, I need to back out. And nobody needs to know that upfront. Any questions before we get started?
He said, "I'm going to count it, and I'm not going to back out of financial."
No. If it's Johnson Miller, you may want to.
Yeah, definitely, but if it was Johnson Miller.
So if you'll turn to page one, you know, I had them put it up on the screen, just in case. It's easier for me to read up there than it is right here. So Belmont City adopts this code, Ethics and Conducts, to assure all the elected and appointed officials while exercising their office to conduct themselves in a manner that will instill public confidence and trust in fair operation and integrity of Belmont's city government. The next part just begins to talk about the ethics, and then it starts to break them down individually. That first part underneath Ethics, between there and number one, is there any thing that anybody would like to talk about?
May I just ask, Michael, you've been here a while. Did this just never come up, or did we feel it was coming? I'm just curious.
So I can't recall specifically in the past that previous councils had talked about this issue. I think that, by and large, throughout those years, they just, I think it's all understood well what was required and what was needed. This would be the first time that I can recall that the councils really looked at this as a topic and is suggesting any changes to what currently is in place.
Some of this, doesn't it kind of duplicate what we signed as candidates?
There are the qualifications and requirements that fall under the candidates, yes. So some of it does cross.
I mean, not as detailed and not as one document, but so I guess maybe that's why it's always been, you know, when you...
You've already agreed.
You've already signed that you agree to that. But again, it's not a specific document.
Technically, policy.
Right.
Jim, what was it, what ethics thing did we sign? Because we said it could be...
That was your political...
The one...
For the fundraising?
Well, in the nepotism also.
It was a fair campaign.
Fair campaign, yeah.
Yes, basically, you'll just do...
No, that's not what I'm talking about.
Missy, I think it was for Tech Dot, there was a grant program, Tech Dot, and we haven't executed that.
Because Dewey said, "This looks like it fits the bill of what we're trying to do."
And that's something that certainly could be incorporated if you choose to do this. That was for a very specific purpose, and that was for, Tech Dot requires any city that receives their grant dollars to essentially agree to those requirements. And you did that whenever we accepted that, whenever we executed that, rather. So that's something you can incorporate into this if you choose to.
Okay, other questions? Okay, we'll just go through number one. Any questions there?
And we would work on the wording as we go, like where it says, "City treasurer, city clerk."
Yeah, we'll make those changes too.
I can make those, if you otherwise like the wording substantially.
Yeah.
The only thing that bothers me a little bit, I'm sorry, it got postponed.
Okay.
Sorry.
Do me close this door.
No, it's our...
I'm glad I saw them.
Okay.
The only thing that bothers me about this is that, a little bit, is like when you say, "The common good of the people of Belmont, and not for any private or personal interest." Well, you know, before I got on city council, my son is an architect, and we were working on some housing for downtown. You know, now I feel like I can't do that, because I feel like I'm going to be accused of having a person, I mean, with her, with her. And it's not that I would be getting any benefits, it's just that somebody, I guarantee you, is going to say, well, she's doing this. So, and I probably, I mean, I've come to that conclusion without this. I guess this just seems to kind of set it up where, you know, every single thing that you do...
What would you do with him that would not have the public's interest? Your opinion of the public's interest in mind? I don't...
Not that I, I don't think I would do anything.
I don't think, that was just a conflict.
But I guarantee you that if we bought land downtown and built houses, that it's going to be on Facebook, that I am doing something, I got special privileges on it, because I was a council member. We've already seen this with just that one thing, you know, so, I mean, it just seems like there are a lot of people out here that are just waiting for something like that to happen.
What do you think, Ed?
Did you have a...
No, I mean, I think what you're real concerned about is whether or not it's perceived as a personal public conflict of interest.
Right.
And I think the state has some very specific requirements or statute language as it relates to conflict of interest.
Yeah, and...
I mean, that just seems so wrong, that this could be private or personal interest. Can it be?
Well, when I first started practicing law, the actual law in Texas was for public officials, that if you were involved in some kind of transaction that had the appearance of conflict, that the appearance of conflict was a conflict. Now, you still might be able to disclose it, you still might be able to sign an affidavit, you still might be able to legally vote, but it was considered to be a conflict. But about 30-plus years ago, the legislature changed the law in Texas, and they really loosened up, really, conflict of interest. And they changed it to, the appearance of a conflict, as you were saying, is not a conflict. The fact that it looks like that you have a relationship, that people would say, okay. So in order to be a conflict of interest in Texas today, you have to have the actual conflict. Like, if it's a relative of yours, you're voting on a contract for that person to do something. If you have a relative or somebody, the city can still do business with that company, but if you have a conflict, there's a form you're supposed to fill out, you disclose that before you start on that item. Ideally, ideally, you'd call the city attorney before the meeting, so I can have the paperwork ready for you. But then you would disclose that later than the start of that discussion of that item. And then, if you're not going to vote on it, because it might be a conflict, then you're also not supposed to take part in any of the discussion. And so you disclose that, you don't take part in that discussion, and then the city is probably not prevented from going ahead and doing business with you. So you're going to always, as an elected official, have the dilemma you're talking about. Because I understand what you're saying, it's never, it never goes away. And I've had many conversations with someone where I said, kind of like you were saying, well, the way you've explained your situation to me, my opinion as a lawyer is, you do not have a conflict of interest. You fill out this form, you disclose it, you're fine, but you're a...
But the city...
But a person may feel like, well, that... So I've known many elected officials that said, well, I'm not going to vote on that because it's just going to look wrong. It's my brother you're doing business with, so I'm just, I'm not going to do it.
So Gary, where is that law, that the 30-year change?
That's just in the, I don't, they just changed several laws in what a conflict was. And also, the courts just changed their interpretation of it. So we had, Texas had one of the stricter conflict of interest situations, and we changed it to one of the, to a very comfortable. The appearance of, the appearance of a conflict is not a conflict, as a matter of law, in Texas. But most elected officials I've known have still abstained from voting in many situations where you could have legally voted.
But see...
But you say it's just not worth it.
Yeah. But I see abstaining from voting, you know, I mean, I think that's very clear-cut. You know, if you, for instance, if Johnson Miller had put in a bid for the audit, I very clearly would abstain from voting. But what I'm talking about is something completely different. I mean, are we precluded from investing in downtown? Are doing, because we're council members? Because I think when you say, "Stewardship of the public interest must be their primary, members will work for the common good of the people, and not for any private or personal interest," that just seems so big and so vague to me, that it makes...
I thought we could take that part out. I think, I understand what you're saying.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
But if you go down there and you buy a lot from somebody else, or even if you put in a bid, if we're saying under MARP for a city lot, you know, well, the way I see it, and the way I've done, and the way Dewey's done, is when something like that comes up, you say, "I'm abstaining, I have, I don't feel comfortable with this because of an interest here, and this is what it is," and we push back. I've had to hand the gavel off to Dewey to do it, because I said, it was an organization I'd worked with, it was Jerry, and I said, "I don't feel comfortable," and we backed off. But if you go through the system, as long as you're not in here saying, yeah, I think we should go for this bid, or that bid, to me, you pulled yourself from that, you wait until that's finished, and then you come back in. Because I understand, there's going to be things that come up that are just, you know, too close.
And when I was looking, it was actually talking about an appearance of fairness doctrine, because pretty much, I'm like, Peggy, I don't have a lot of interest like Peggy is involved in, but you really do think about every little thing that you do. I mean, you do, it becomes a part of you. And when I was researching this and looking at it, it was talking about the appearance of fairness doctrine, and I don't...
Well, let me give you a couple more examples, so think about that. I really think this, to me, the discussion you're having now is the most valuable part of an ethics ordinance, particularly for newer council members, because it gives you a little idea, because you're going to run up against these situations. But your interpretation of that, you're reading it correctly, and you're saying, wow, you could interpret this to say, I can't do anything. But that interpretation is not the way the law through lawsuits, or the law through the legislature, would even come close to interpreting it like that. For instance, let me, let me say, you spend, you vote on a contract, you work a construction contract to fix, to update a park, which you did just a couple months ago. And then, three weeks later, or six weeks later, when the project's done, your grandkids go to that park and play on that park. Well, somebody could say, oh, now I know why the council voted on that. They just, well, you can never prevent somebody from figuring out an evil motive that you're doing. But there is no conflict of interest. The zoning ordinance, we're going to bring that, a complete rewrite of the zoning ordinance, wonderful, going to help develop building in Odessa. Well, you all own property, you have property that's zoned, so none of you can vote on the zoning ordinance. Well, no, you can't, you can't possibly interpret it that closely. Everything you vote on is benefiting the city. Now, you're saying it's that public benefit rather than your private benefit, but there's always, that wording's just a little odd, because any public benefit is nearly always going to have some specific personal benefit to somebody. I'm here asking for a zone change on my property. It's not hurting the neighborhood, or maybe it's helping the neighborhood, but I'm getting a benefit. You can vote on that. Well, what if you live on that block? I've had this question come up, where council members say, well, I can't vote on that, that's my neighbor. My house is actually right next to the border to them. And my explanation is, no, your property may be affected by a zone change or something, but that's, your job is to vote on the zone. And you're not, unless somebody could show that your neighbor paid you $100 to vote yes, in which case, that's illegal, that's property. But just being affected by one of your decisions is not conflict of interest. If you're making good decisions, you all should be affected by every decision you make. And you should be affected personally, as well as for the common good.
Now, I guess I just feel like it's so important, we have so many major, big decisions to make. It's so important that the citizens of Odessa trust our decisions.
That's one reason we're working on this.
And, you know, I just, I want to have a clear understanding. I don't want, in the, it may be fine in court, but in the court of public opinion, I want us to, always, people to say, that's my council member, and they're really looking out for us.
Absolutely.
And so, if that means, I mean, I told Jason, my stepson, that he couldn't fill out that RFP for, the city sent out one for downtown housing. And I said, "You can't fill it out now, because I'm on city council." I really didn't know if he could or not, but it felt like he couldn't. And so I just, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand what exactly, you know, for the benefit of my private interest means.
I think we take, I mean, I agree, that's kind of written funny. I mean, I don't mind, we'll just mark it out.
So it's a second, it's written, or...
It's pretty broad. I think you could be accused of a whole lot of things with that.
Well, see, when I pushed back, the city, in a kind of a land swap, swapped some land, but then ended up closing this street for the parking lot. Well, I'm a member of First Baptist, and I'm also the mayor. So in my opinion, it's hard to, where one ends and the other one to begin, so you just have to say, I'm not in this. I just feel like I need to push back. And I think...
And just trust that we each have our own ethical...
But I think part of it is, we need to have it written down, because your ethics may not be what mine are. You know, each one of us may have different, but if we have a guideline that says, this is acceptable at this point, then we're, I think we're all on the same page.
And I would recommend to you that, as part of this process, when you get to the point and you actually adopt, if you do, in fact, adopt something like an ethics ordinance, there are actually some pretty standard forms about conflict. And I know Odessa hasn't always used them, but I would recommend you use them, and it's just to create, whenever any of you abstain from voting for a reason, we just, I fill it out, I put in an explanation of the reason, and then have you sign it, so that if anybody comes back later, we say, well, here's our stack, you can look at it.
Why don't you add that to the...
I can add that in here, if that's all right.
And I guess, I get it, when you're voting, that was really wrong. But that's fine. I mean, I get that...
But it's hazy at best, right?
It's, but, but just going down and buying something, you know, buying a lot and doing something, I mean, that doesn't require votes, is that a conflict of interest? Because I know the plans we have for a downtown Odessa, and I know that if you put something in right now, and it goes good, it's going to appreciate in value. I know that, because I've worked with the hotel, I've worked with the downtown Odessa. So am I, do I have the appearance of a conflict? If I buy something and it goes up in value, then have I benefited myself because I had insider knowledge? We didn't vote on it.
Well...
But I have knowledge of what's going on.
I'd like to respond to that one, do you? That's such a good scenario, that could easily come up. And because downtown is an area where the council does have a project and a goal of trying to improve downtown, so we want people to put in businesses and things that will help it. And you've even announced that you'll do incentives where you contribute. Well, certainly, if one of you council members or your immediate family member did a project in downtown, your common sense would suggest to you, don't ask for an incentive, and the council wouldn't be able to grant it to you. But that is a, but that is a wonderful example of, well, so no council member could invest in downtown and build a restaurant on your own? No, you certainly, you certainly could, and in fact, that would really be taken, that's the goal of the city's downtown emphasis, is that somebody on their own, the market would come in and say, you know what, this could afford a dealership, this could afford a restaurant, I'm going to get some guys together, and we're going to build it. Now, if you come to the city and ask for specific support, that's different. If you, if that piece of land was owned by somebody else, and you kind of whispered to have the city buy it, and then you, now that, now that, that's when what you're talking about would be inappropriate. But for any of you to just come into downtown, or any recognized area, take one of our CDBG areas, and say, I'm going to make an investment there, well, as long as you go through the PNC process, as long as you fill out the form, pay the fee like everybody else, and then when it comes to the council, your friends on the council are going to vote for that, you need to abstain, because of course it's you, and you're going to get a financial benefit, hopefully, you know, you wouldn't be buying land, you wouldn't be building a new council, you didn't think. But that's not, that's really not what conflict of interest is. Conflict of interest really is that you're, you are benefiting in an inappropriate way. And you missed it, like, I have some secret information, nobody else knows that the city has these incentive projects for this area of town, and so you come in and quietly get it done. But that's not how, that's not what our downtown project is like, that's normally not how a city would act, because we want everybody to know what benefits we have. So you're on the right track. You're reading it, and you're being sensitized to, and like you said, everything you do, somebody's going to look at it, they're going to try to find an inappropriate motive. But somebody's thought-up inappropriate motive is not a conflict of interest. It's not even the appearance of a conflict of interest under current Texas law. You've got to have a real problem. And most of the time, you know what that problem is. But there's a few times where it gets close, and so what I would always recommend to you, what I recommend to every city council member I've ever worked with, is when you first get an agenda, or when you first get an email from the manager about some project coming in, and you think, oh, I may have a conflict because of the area, or because of a relative, or my neighbor is one of the two people in town that do that, so he's probably, she's likely to get that, just call and ask us. Because that's another one of the things where your city attorney and staff are kind of specialists in that area. And because we do this every week for city staff.
My other question, yes? As we go, this is, this is just going through it today, right?
Just going through it.
Okay.
Seeing if there's anything that sticks out to you that, yeah, let's talk about that.
Because today it may not, and then when I sleep on it tomorrow, it...
But, you know, what I was going to do is go through this...
It just starts the process.
Go through this, get a starting point.
Okay.
Give to Gary, say, hey, make the little changes, cities, titles, all that kind of stuff. But anything we don't, move on, or say, hey, we want to change this, leave it as is, then bring it back, and then we will brief through it individually, and go over a briefing, and look at it, and say, yeah, this looks good, let's go ahead and put it on the agenda.
Okay. So Gary's going to work on number one, to make it...
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions on two through six?
Just...
I know, I'm letting everybody just kind of go through.
My guy should phrase them differently.
Help us, Lord.
I guess you need to probably pick this thing apart and back them, because we went through ethics, you know, with DCISD, and just little things like the professional and personal conduct of members while exercising their office must be above reproach. What defines above reproach? I mean, you know...
Good point.
And the way that works is, you do.
I mean, it's speed.
Well...
I know lead foot, you get speed through it.
But I am trying to talk myself out of it.
That's in the way of the laws, Peggy.
It's like she walks that length, and they're right.
You know, got us stuck at the, you know, just...
And that's the questions to ask, right there.
Okay.
I mean, I know what it is to me, you know, it's what, Peggy.
Well, and that's part of, that realization that all, everybody has their own compass, they have a sense of right and wrong.
Right, sure.
They have a sense of ethics, morality, and morality, inappropriateness, cheating, or fairness. And it really does vary. And that's why they're, just speaking as your lawyer, that's why there's a benefit in you taking some time to go through documents like this and actually adopting. What I just whispered to the mayor is, there's some things in here that are just kind of truisms.
Yeah.
Whether you put this in writing or not, you've got to follow the law, you already know that.
Right.
But don't fall into the other side of saying, well, basically, this is just saying, do good, don't be bad.
Don't be ugly.
But the point is, you're, you're saying it's important to you.
It is.
And you can't, you're absolutely right, you can't think of every situation.
Right.
So we start off knowing that there's some members of the public that are going to always find a way to think you're doing something inappropriate. But the ultimate decision of what's fair and reasonable is you'll get input, if you ask it, from your staff, and we actually go to seminars and things on this regularly. But the final decision-maker is the city council. If you adopt this as your ordinance, then when it's time to interpret this, your city attorney, your city manager may say what we think, but you have to decide. And you might very well have some close calls. But that's, that's the benefit, again, to me, that's, it's a tough decision, but that's the benefit of this type of ordinance, where you're trying to make it, some cities try to make it detailed, and try to figure out everything they can, and put all the exceptions in. I sent a couple of those to the mayor, and he, you know, along with all the others that he's looking at, and he's saying, no, this town needs something simple. So he found this one.
Yeah.
And I've come to agree, that's actually better, because you're, this is a starting point.
She's here to edit and create.
It's an official statement, you're saying, we are taking this seriously, we are recognizing, we recognize that there's some gray areas, and so by golly, we're exercising our authority and our obligation, we're standing up and saying, if there are gray areas, we're going to handle them. And if there's a difference of opinion, then a majority, the council as a group, will talk about it, and we'll tell you. This isn't, your city attorney isn't going to interpret this and go file charges against somebody.
Right.
You're, you have to enforce this.
And I think it's, I think it's great, you know, that we have that, because we do want our constituents, and we do want the public to know that we're working hard to... hard to do the right thing, make the right decisions, and work for the city of Odessa. You know, so, just like as a teacher, you know, there's some things, it's not wrong for me to do, but I absolutely would not do because I'm a teacher and I value my certification.
Absolutely.
And I value that, I want people to think that teachers are okay. So, it's a...
Yes, Peggy.
This is a tough one.
I just got a text from Malcolm, and he is ill. He got back into town last night after midnight, and he's really, he feels, he's sick. He wanted to see if the council would table this until all the council members were present. He had a lot of notes and some concerns in regards to the ordinance. He understands that we're not going to vote on it, but he does want to have an opportunity to discuss it. We actually are going to discuss this again.
Yeah, but discuss it. When they draft it. I didn't want them going to typing all this in and then us going, "Eh, let's look at it." That's why I wanted to kind of do it. So we will have another chance.
Okay, so I'm just going to text him back and tell him that this is just the first pass-through with some changes and that we will still have an opportunity to discuss it.
Y'all are in control of that.
Anything else on this one?
Anything that you want struck out, or revisited, or rewritten? Gary, I can look at that and rewrite it. I think it's right, I mean, you can go to one or two or the other. You can have one that's very loose and really doesn't have a lot of, a lot to it. Or one that's highly complex and has a lot of specific requirements. I think where you need to be is somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Okay. Next page, on seven and eight, which you require.
I'm not real comfortable with it. Paragraph seven, tell me what that means, Gary. Because if we have an issue in animal controls center, and a constituent contacts me, and I go down there to see if what I'm hearing is correct, is that not getting information outside of the open meeting?
What, where are you finding that in here?
Members shall refrain from receiving information outside of the open meeting.
Yeah, and people call all the time.
Oh, yeah.
I see. I wouldn't recommend to adopt something that says that because I don't think that's clear. I don't agree with it.
Well, neither.
Now, I understand someone is trying to say, "Don't make up your mind..."
Before you learn.
"...before you get there." But they're trying to, it's somebody that's kind of a half-lawyer, you know, saying, "Well, it's, the jury's not supposed to listen to anything except what they hear in the jury book." Well, this isn't a trial. This is politics. And the only way any of you, no offense, are ever going to get elected or could possibly get re-elected is if you talk to people.
Exactly.
And you listen to what they say. And you say, and you better go look with your own two eyes and see. And so, there's nothing in the law that makes that, there's nothing in open meetings that prohibits that. Because that's self-governed. However, some people get, they start thinking, "Oh, you can't do anything outside of the meeting."
Part of the problem is, came from California. And that's why we're going through it, kind of.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't like seven.
Okay, next is conflict of interest.
So we're taking seven out.
Look, knock seven out. And it talks about the Fair Political Practices Commission, which I'm sure is California.
Yeah.
And so we would have it adjusted out to Texas.
And what I would usually say, if you have references in ordinances to state agencies or federal agencies, for years, I've put in the name of the agency, and I've changed that a few years, and I just say, "To the appropriate agency." Because Texas now does like other states, and we change the names of our agencies every cycle, seventy or so. And so, if you put a specific name in there, you have to go back and amend it. I would like to follow through on that.
Gary, you mentioned earlier that we, the law has changed over time as it relates to conflict of interest. Would it be beneficial if you gave the rest of the council what that law is today? Or is that a...
Well, this even says, "Create an appearance of impropriety." I mean, this specifically says...
You get into this from the first.
Well, and that, remember, as the mayor said, this is intended as a starting point. And this one is from another state. So it's got some good ideas, it's kind of a short version, but it does have specific references in it to that other state law, which we would have to take out. And again, the goal was not for staff to start trying to clean it up a little, but let you look at it. And if you were interested in this at all, then I'll go through and clean it up in Texas.
I should go ahead and text them.
I can do that.
The conflict of interest, according with what we have used.
Okay.
And I know gift and favors, we actually have a gift policy that would need to be referenced.
When you get into that second paragraph of eight, then it's starting to make a little more sense other than the reference to the FPTC.
That third paragraph says you're going to bring your financial statement up here.
Well, I don't want to do that. Y'all would just cry. You would just cry and say, "How are you living?"
Or take them and offering.
Take them and all, honey.
You know, I actually thought since we were, the size we were, it looked to me like we're...
Not until it has been adopted by council, from my understanding, which will be the next census.
So the next...
And the number will go above 100,000, and then it will have to be disclosed.
Because at that point, when we're, when we are officially a home rule city of over $100,000, 100,000 people, then we will all have to prove, all candida, all, not, candidates are just the elected officials.
It's the city council, the city manager, and the city attorney.
All have to file their personal financials.
Y'all are going to cry. You're going to say...
Yeah, I'm going to take them and offering.
Yeah, offering for me.
We can do that now.
And I filled these out for a lot of my clients, and it's not as onerous as it sounds because it's not like a financial statement that says, "I have $50,421 in the bank and I own property worth 101,000." It's, "I have cash in the little boxes, say, greater than 25,000 or less than 25,000, and I own property and it's greater." It's boxes that, I mean, you're disclosing, but it's not like you're putting your account over there.
I think a county actually has to do that because when you put city and county together, it's still one county, they're over it.
And the law was written specifically based on the US, the last US census official count. Or, since there's 10 years between that, a city council could, if you wanted to, since the last count, you could go in and if you had reasonable information to rely on, you did some of your own studies or something, you could declare yourself to be over 100,000 if you had evidence to support that. Most cities just got to wait for that census to come along. It's come along now a year and a half away, so it'll be whatever it'll be.
So do we leave it in, or do we leave it out on the financial?
That whole paragraph's coming out.
That would come out. It wouldn't apply to you right now.
Make it.
Right, Texas eight, the whole...
Okay, number 10 and 11, anything on those?
We let none as is.
We're actually, he's going to revise that to what our policies have.
To our policies.
Our policies. So, the confidentiality in the public resources, that doesn't look like a problem to me. Somebody has something.
I mean, do we, the only confidential information we ever have is when we go into executive session, right? I mean, all of our meetings are open.
Anything dealing with, quote, "projects" for ODC is confidential.
Yeah, I know that, ODC, for compliance.
Any personnel matters are confidential. And anything else that comes up, because sometimes you do have stuff that comes up. Then, number 12, representation of private interest.
Well, no, I think that one's one where you, there are cities, like California, where you might have a, you might have a member of the city council who's an attorney, and who thought it was a good idea to go to the PNC and advocate before it. Of course, you wouldn't do something like that. You would do your profession in one of your city places. We would call that a conflict of interest.
Okay. Advocacy, anything there? Well, that's something we'll have to correct, is we don't recognize that.
No.
But that's just in here.
Sometimes cities will attempt to do that. My legal opinion as a lawyer is, you don't lose your political rights, rights, as an American citizen, when you join the council. Now, again, if you choose in a contested council race to go with this guy against that guy, you need to think through that. So that may or may not be a good idea, but that's really not something you would want to do through an ordinance because you're...
This is an endorse candidates for all council seats. I didn't think that was something that we...
There are cities in Texas that council members exercising the rights as citizens have endorsed.
Right.
Well, typically, Republican, Democrat, there are some cities where it's actually that way. And so, you know, it gets into the politics.
Well, if the bill passes, then it may be that way. Is it legislature trying to make city council positions partisan?
Well, and usually the way this has come up in the past before the legislature is where you have one council member, if you were to go to Austin and say, "I want to testify on this fire-related bill," or this, and you presented yourself as, "I'm council member" from, then it would sound like you're speaking for the council. And none of you should speak for the council as a group unless you've been authorized by the council as a group to do that. You can always speak for yourself as a council member because you've been elected.
Right.
But you just want to be careful in saying, "Well, I'm telling you my position as a council member," unless you've been authorized by the council as a group, or you wouldn't. Because remember, that's why you have a mayor and a mayor pro temp, they're kind of speaking for you. But you could, as a group, vote to authorize any of you to go to Austin and speak for the city, or to speak to a local group on that.
I think just kind of look at the wording and clean it up because I don't, you know, see that I should...
So, what are you saying, Paul? The next time you call me, I'm going to tell you to call David, okay?
Me too.
You're wearing my pistol in the front. And you come to my truck after this. Next, policy role of members, looks pretty straightforward.
This is, I'll just again jump in just for a moment to remind you that in Texas...
You never jump in for just a moment.
We have, every year in Texas, there's lawsuits and there's issues where a council member thought, by being elected to the council member, that, "Okay, now I'm the police chief, so now I'm going to go out, I'm going to tell the fire chief where he needs to set up his screws." I'm going to see some guys working on the street, and I'm going to stop and say, "You know what? The potholes over here are deeper than these, go over and do that."
I'd try to take the next street when I see all that.
Okay.
Don't Michael say, "You can go."
The next two, independent of boards, commissions, and positive workplace.
That's, I don't know if I like the way this is worded or not. You can't make any, yeah, you can't make any recommendations. And I guess there's a question, "What's unduly influenced?"
Yeah, this is a, this is another example of how we talk different in Texas than in California. And my opinion to you as a lawyer is, you appoint people to boards, and you want them to exercise independent discretion. At the same time, if you appoint somebody to a board and you don't like, and you don't agree with the decisions they're making, and you think they're making decisions that don't reflect what the council as a group wants, again, it's, it all depends on the council as a group, not as an individual. Well, then, you certainly have the authority in Texas to unappoint all of your appointees. And so, you know, in some states, they start to have things like riots, and there's some states, United States now, where their city attorneys unionize, imagine that. But you appoint those boards, so you have the authority to unappoint them. Again, the way you do that, I would say, unduly deliberations, if you were to walk into a PNC meeting and say, "Well, I'm Gary Landers, I'm on the council, and I'm here by telling y'all to deny this zone change, and if you don't, we'll have a new PNC next week." Politically, you shouldn't say that. But on the other hand, you appoint them. And so, I'm one of those lawyers that says, "The council, you're elected. All the people you appoint aren't elected. Elections make a big difference." And so, you cannot have your authority to appoint and unappoint taken away. You can give the manager or the city attorney a contract, but you can't take away your right to change that contract. And you can appoint people to boards, commissions, and they can have a term, and you want them to exercise independent judgment. But if you don't agree with their decisions, so you're just stuck with them until the next meeting?
But that wouldn't preclude them from having a discussion with their appointee.
No, you can all, and you should have, you should have communication. I mean, some, I know we've had some discussions that are about, well, you know, open meetings, and you can't talk to people without, you, some people explain the Texas Open Meetings law as if they don't, as if they've never read the United States Constitution or the Texas Constitution, and they don't understand how representative democracy works. You have to allow elected officials to talk to people. And if elected officials appoint people, and those appointed people don't do what you want them to do, you have to have the authority to change that. Now, there are states that are passing laws that are interfering with that, saying, "Well, no, you know, you appointed, you can't touch them." The only people you can't really touch are judges. You can't unappoint them during their term without going through a specific legal proceeding. But even with the judge, if you go through the legal proceeding and prove they did something inappropriate, you can unappoint them. But other than judges, everybody else, you can unappoint people you've appointed. So, it sounds, it sounds bad to say, "Unduly influenced," but you want them to exercise independent judgment, but it needs to be independent judgment within the boundaries that the council is comfortable.
Okay, so clean it up, or...
Well, because what I thought on this, kind of went on to some of the boards that we serve on. If those boards are starting to stray completely away from the city's objectives and all, then I don't want, I don't want to buy like number 15 by saying, "You guys need to, you need to rethink what you're doing," you know, because the city organization, you know, this is A, B, and C, and y'all are down here with X, Y, Z. And so, I don't want that to violate the, someone to come back and say, you know, they're being unduly influenced.
If I were going to write that from scratch from you, I would say something about, you appoint people for, you appoint people the same reason why I hire, I hire assistant attorneys, for their knowledge, experience, and independent thinking. But by that, that doesn't mean they can make decisions that I don't agree with and don't support.
Yeah.
Why don't you rewrite it? Everybody good with positive workplace environment?
Well, we don't know. Let's change it. Let's just change it.
Okay, next to conduct guidelines, I want you to read down to the bottom of the page and kind of look it up. Questions, comments?
I'm not saying that I don't agree. I do agree. I think on letter C, where it says that if an offended member should make notes of the actual words used and call it for a point of personal privilege, I know that's in parliamentary procedure anyway. If that's in an open meeting, does that what that, is that what that means?
That's what that's talking about.
And I think we should-
Man, that was tough.
You probably want to grin and bear it if at all possible.
That's, I mean-
Because calling for the point of privilege is, you're actually escalating. With the exception of that, I really like this. I think it's very well with, but-
Yeah.
That, that one sentence-
And you know-
Probably going to get you in more trouble than you're in.
I, how would, is there any way? And I, probably not, but like, if a situation like this does occur, the council couldn't go into an executive session-
Has to be posted.
-because it has to be posted.
Okay, there's certain items you can, certain items you can-
Yeah. So, how would we, how would we address that? Because it would need to be addressed, you know, because especially if we do adopt this and that situation did arise in a council meeting, then, then we need to address it as a council. But are we waiting two weeks out?
I think the only way I've ever seen what you're describing, see, this is obviously a very rare and unusual service. The only way I've ever seen a premier with action working is with a presiding officer, if the conduct is just too inappropriate to just direct the sergeant under arms to remove Mr. Landers from the room. Or you just cancel the meeting. There, I've seen, I haven't been in any, but I've seen situations where a public meeting in other states is about to get out of hand or there, at the rate it's going, there will be literally a rolling of aisles, fistfighting. So, you, if you have that far of a situation, you have to either cancel the meeting or you have your security to move, even the elected official. Neither one of those are good solutions and so-
Right.
You wouldn't want to do that until you just think there's no, that's the only way to maintain law and order.
But in C, I don't see C being the knockdown, drag out. I just, it just says here, "Avoid personal comments that could offend somebody," you know, so I think-
But I think, but the, it would be nice if in a public meeting you could say, "Point of order," or, "I think that was..."
That would align.
But that's really hard to do because then I have to say, "Point of order, I think Councilman Willis is getting out of line with me, and so I'd like the chair to tell her to go home."
Yeah.
How do you, how do you really do that?
And technically, you know, if someone does call for that, I know that the chair, you know, is responsible for maintaining that order and making that decision and all. But at what point then is that discussed further?
Oh, well, then you would, you could, you could bring that, you could put it on a future agenda, you could have it on a future-
Okay.
-executive session agenda.
Okay.
You just, a situation like that, you don't, you don't really need to, I don't think you would want to go into executive session, use one of those exceptions because if it's, if it's really that serious, you should just cancel the meeting, come back in the-
And we move to the next item.
Something to just, just move on. If you can't move on, then you're forced to just cancel.
And if you just move on to the next item and whoever those two people, whoever's offending-
We'll just have to talk about it for the next meeting. I mean, because-
So that was my question. You said you just talk about it in here?
You can't come back in here.
That's supposed to say, where do you pop at?
No, it's got to be those two or we as council-
That's what I was thinking. Wouldn't it be just be those two that-
Yeah, it's one situation.
I would think that it would need to be the council address because if there's already an issue with two people, then they need someone to-
In order to take any follow-up type action, like what we would call punitive or training, like you would with an employee, that requires the council as a group. But you have, under Texas law, you have the inherent authority, meaning whether it's inherent or not, or whether it's in your charter or not, you have the inherent authority in self-government to maintain enough order to do self-government. So you have all the authority you need during a public meeting to remove anybody that maybe thinks needs to be removed or to tell somebody their time to speak is up and enforce that. Because you have to, you have to maintain order for the dem, for the process of self-government to work. Now, the person tomorrow can sue you and say, "You should have given me another 10 minutes" or something, but you have the inherent ability to maintain order.
Don't you rewrite that part?
Yeah. And because, okay, let me just ask this real quick and then we're moving on. So if we took out that someone would have to actually use the words, "Point of personal privilege," did that would not prohibit the council from discussing it in an executive session at another? I mean, to show-
You can, you can always ask after the fact to have a discussion.
Okay.
It's kind of like unfinished business.
Okay.
You ask the, the mayor-
Yeah, you can to the executive session.
-the city manager or two council members can put something on them.
It's just going to be one of those items that can go in.
I was going to say, that doesn't even qualify for executive session.
Would that not be a personnel matter?
Well, well, for employees-
If it's an employee-
We get a $37 a month check.
Yeah. But I think if it is a council member with an employee, that's a personnel matter, isn't it? If it's an employee.
If it's an employee, if it's between two council members, then that's different.
Okay. Well, that's going to be fun. So, yeah.
You can talk about it.
Better. You just-
If I remember our training in San Antonio correctly, if Deidre's speaking and I interrupt her, and I don't like what she's saying, I interrupt her, she can call for point of order. At some point, you could have me removed, right?
Yeah, that authority, yes, sir.
No, I mean, that's, you know, and I think inherent needs to say, "Please do not interrupt." I mean, yes, you may not, I may not agree with Tom saying, but-
That's just Robert Truitt's order.
I as a chair, but, but sometimes that needs to be put in, into documents.
Point of order.
Yeah, but I mean, it sounds like it's just as effective to put in here that the council meetings shall be run according to Robert's Rules of Order, rather than say people shouldn't interrupt.
Well, but then that would-
He was old.
Be upon him then. If it says it's ran by Robert Truitt's order, then it's on us to know what Robert Truitt says. Are you still are under that? We agree to that, then you're under that, whether you read it or not.
Okay. Everybody good with D? Pretty. I'm going to speed us up a little bit because we're 30. Why don't you look through the elected and appointed officials in public and public meetings?
We have a set time for each other.
Yes, 40 minutes. If there's no question, we move to elected and appointed officials, conduct with city staff.
I know, Sammy, this is a needed, but I mean, I've just never signed stuff that says, you know, "I can't smirk" or-
That's what I just told him, "Smirk it."
With those two, that's a problem.
I mean, this just seems to be-
Well, I think, you know, that's, it could have been a smirk 20 years ago. It could be some other facial expression now, you know.
Don't you just, members shall try to be conscious of facial expressions?
Yeah, we're playing, so.
Would use the word dissing sound better?
No, I, I mean, I-
They can quit dissing.
It's just amazing to me that we have to put in writing that we can't smirk. I mean, the, I don't mean that-
I think just members shall try to be conscious of facial expressions, period.
That is what we do.
I mean, we know not to lose voice. Otherwise.
Tomorrow, put your head down on the bench and then I'm going to ask her to-
Yeah, but you start banging your forehead on the table. It'd be a problem.
You need to stop the meeting and send me away.
Take the conduct with city staff. Anything there? This is something I think we've been needing for a while. They've got hard jobs anyway, and we don't need to overburden them with things. But they do need to be there for questions.
Brings a question up. Are we allowed to attend any of your staff meetings?
Typically not because we as a council have five employees.
I, I think as a, as a practical matter, you guys are always welcome. I would like to know that you're coming, that way we can be prepared. We certainly want to make sure that we accommodate you. But obviously, there's a separation of responsibility. But as far as Michael Madero is concerned, you can certainly come.
We just don't want it to where department heads running to you and complaining-
Yeah.
And then it's going, you know, and that's kind of a-
That's where the smirking comes in.
So is everybody good with the conduct?
Hold on one sec.
This must be a lot faster reading.
No, accountants, no, I have accountants in the family. They're very-
But you've already read this. We're seeing-
Michael, is this what you would be thinking?
I would. I mean, I think it hits kind of the, the points that certainly any city manager would want. Again, ultimately, the city manager is responsible for the entire staff. If there's an issue with staff, certainly you can come to me and I'll make sure I'll address those. If there's an issue with me, obviously, you are the city council. You as a group can collectively handle it and look at me.
You know, I guess, kind of getting to be, I mean, I certainly, certainly appreciate that, you know, don't, don't go jumping in and all. But I'll give just a real quick little example. I ran down to Sammy to ask him a quick question that we-
Sure, you know, I'm working on-
Yeah, that we were, that we're working on, just a quick question. And no offense, but you know, by the time, you know, I ask you and then we're in here until-
Kind of gives what time?
Whenever, six o'clock. And then tomorrow, you know, you'll get a chance and then you can get back. And not that that's a problem 99% of the time, but when it's like-
Sure.
-just something really quick, is that a problem for you?
No, no, it's not. And when I've asked my staff, if you guys contact them because either you can't get a hold of me or you need an answer right away that I can't get you, that's certainly not a problem. My staff knows to let me know that they had a visit with you.
Okay.
Because I'd like to know that, for example, if there's follow-up, that that's been done or that you've got the right information.
Sure.
So that's, that's not a considerable problem.
Because I know I visited with-
I said, "Was nobody?"
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Because you know, I keep saying, I'm going to go ride with Animal Control because they wanted, they invited me. Haven't made that arrangement, and I'll do that through Norman, through you or whatever.
I don't think this is intended to stop all correspondence with staff. I want you to engage our staff. I think they want to engage with you as well. I think where the recognition needs to be in terms of directing staff, then that's certainly the perky of the city manager.
Right.
If you guys have, need something from Philip or any other member of the staff, you certainly have the ability to do that and ask them.
No, I don't have enough hours left in my day to run any of your departments, trust me.
Okay.
I think with that one area, just as long as Michael's comfortable with that-
No, this one, we re-need to, we do this.
If you want something, then change it.
Okay. The next area is council conduct with boards and commissions. I've asked Gary to kind of come up with one because this is a lot of California in this one.
Okay.
Okay. So this whole one is tested.
Yeah, just hold on that one. Then the next one would be sanctions. And I will ask Gary to go through this and kind of come up with what happens in California is going to be a little bit different in Texas, but have him go through that also in alignment with other Texas cities.
It's pretty tough that first council member should not sign an acknowledgement. Well, you, Dewey in here, he may not like what we're doing, and if he says, "I'm not going to sign it," what are we going to do?
Well, that's why we need to have enough opportunity. Malcolm's not here either.
Yeah.
It wants to be. So I don't think we can adopt this until every council member's had an opportunity.
That's not the goal. The goal is to, where do you start? You know, if we come up with it on our own, probably going to miss some stuff that other people have learned. And that's why we went out, and some of them were just, you have to walk with your left foot first, you know, the next day, and it was just crazy. And that's why I thought this was a good starting point, but it doesn't have to be ours because we have certain, you know, gifts, gift policy. But I think we do need to have a conflict of interest statement. And I think it wouldn't be bad to go ahead and say, "If we give you over $100,000, this, you know, may need to be something that you agree with." And say, you know, just as far as my perspective, because we're judged-
If we give you over $100,000, what did I miss?
I mean, if, if, you know, an organization, we give them-
Oh, one of our, somebody we give money to as-
Just say, they have to have an ethics order or a policy.
Kind of like what we did with state.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah.
So you're going to redo the whole sanctions?
And then B, ethics train, are we going through training? Does that need to be in there if we're not going through training?
Well, and that's why I asked him to go through it all. And, you know, I mean, training might be good on him. And, you know, maybe he's been put in here, when somebody's elected, Norman gives him a CD with Robert's Rules. And that's, yeah, well, that'll be a fun one. He should get sleep one night.
That orange page they gave us at that first town, I think it's really a great one.
And that may be something we attach to this and say-
I mean, it's a really good, you can-
Because if you read that book-
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want that.
It's not that big.
I don't want it.
It is a book.
So is he doing C too?
Yeah, he's going to work on C.
But we'll have input.
We'll have input. He's just going to clean it up and then we'll kind of go from there.
Okay, good.
And then I guess with the implementation, that's something that we will talk about at the next review. And I will reach out to Malcolm, just have him send any of the concerns he has, and I will send them on. Or we can meet on it the next time, whichever is easier.
Maybe send him this.
He shouldn't have.
He says he's made notes, but he would like to.
I've read it. Norman sent it to us.
Yeah, I remember.
I read.
Two over here, you can see.
You know, I'm just getting into the things you said are more important than I'm giving them credit.
Are you ignoring my emails?
Not if they have tickets.
Okay, are we done with this part?
We are done with this part, so we will-
I'll adjust the subject line next time.
Catch my attention.
Okay, good, we got a break down.
15 minutes, yes, ma'am.
All right.